Gentlemen, it's a little past six thirty, so go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's public hearing on the environmental assessment of the Greensburg Airport. My name is Don Trivitt. I would be acting as a hearing officer for tonight's public hearing. Originally, the hearing officer was scheduled to be Aaron Davenport of the engineering firm of Butler Fairman and Cypher. Unfortunately, Mr. Davenport has recently experienced some health problems and is not able to be here tonight. I've represented the Seventh General Aviation Air Force throughout the state of Indiana and served as hearing officer previously on the public hearing, so I would ask to fill in for Aaron. Our thoughts and prayers are with Aaron Davenport and his family. At this time, I'd like to ask if you do have a cell phone on you to either silence or turn off, so it's not disruptive. Also, we have a couple of sheets at the back of the room. One is just a general signing sheet, and if you have not already signed the signing sheet, we would ask that you do that. That way, we're able to keep track of our number of attendants tonight. So if you haven't signed it, then you can do it to the floor and leave. Appreciate that. As I think you're probably aware, a legal notice was published in the Daily News, a local newspaper, on May 30, 2017, at least thirty days in advance of this public hearing. A copy of the draft environmental assessment was made available for public review at the Greensburg Decatur County Public Library and also at the offices of Butler Fairman and Cypher, and that is done also at least thirty days before the hearing date. We also had an informal information meeting this afternoon before the public hearing. If you weren't able to make that, it's unfortunate, but we are going to give you a chance now to make your comments. And the purpose of this public hearing is to hear comments with regard to the draft environmental assessment for a proposed project at the Greensburg Airport. I recognize that the project has received a great amount of public interest and scrutiny for several years, and that they're undoubtedly matters that some of you might want to discuss that really have little or nothing to do with the environmental assessment that we're here to talk about tonight. My approach to a public hearing is not to, is to avoid stifling the public, and I'll give considerable leeway in allowing comments even if they don't directly relate to the environmental assessment. I may, in an effort to keep us on topic, I may occasionally interject an observation of getting far afield of the topics that we're really here to discuss tonight. In a few minutes, I will turn the floor over to Paul Shaffer. He's going to give a brief overview of the draft environmental document. Following his comments, we will proceed to the public comment part of the hearing. We have provided, one of the documents, it was the back of the room, was a speakers' list, and those who wanted to speak were asked to sign their names on the speakers' list. If you didn't do that, don't fear, you're still going to have a chance to talk. We'll start with the speakers' list, and we'll go through the speakers' list. Once that's exhausted, then I'm going to ask for show of hands, the people who would like to speak but haven't had an opportunity to do so yet, and we'll call on you. As you're called on, we ask that you come up to the microphone so that you can be heard, and we'll open the floor then for your comments. We're going to ask that you state your name, your address, and then follow that with your comments. Due to the large volume of people here tonight, we are going to limit comments to, initial comments to three minutes. We'll call on you, make your comments. If you're not done, don't fear, because once we go through the speakers' list, and those who have raised their hand and would like to say something, once we've gone through all of that, we'll come back to those who have indicated they want more time. So don't fear that you won't get to say what you want to say if you can't get it done in three minutes. I'm asking that you please understand that per the Federal Aviation Administration guidance, this is not a question-and-answer session. This is your opportunity to provide any and all comments regarding the draft environmental assessment. If you ask questions, whether rhetorical or otherwise, it's probably pretty unlikely that the questions are going to be answered, because that's not the purpose of the meeting, and this is not the forum for that. So, and we have to keep this to a reasonable time period, so we're going to go through, listen to your comments, which will be recorded by a reporter here, and she's going to be recording all of the comments that are made this evening. We also have a public comment sheet that is at the back of the room, and you can make your comments on a public comment sheet. You can do that in addition to speaking here this evening, or you can do that in lieu of speaking here this evening. That's your choice, but if you can fill out a public comment sheet, it has a name and address. Paul Shaffer has his name and address on here, and all you have to do is, once you make your comments, fold it, put a stamp on it, and you can mail that. Or, Mr. Shaffer's fax number and email address are also the sheets, so if you prefer to fax them or email those to him, you can do that as well. It's your option. The legal notice that you read, that was in the newspaper, did state that the public comment period will remain open for ten days following the hearing tonight, so you need to have your comments if you're going to send something in. If you have a written comment, it has to be in by July 10, 2017, and again, you can give it to Paul however you want. You can also, if you would prefer to leave your comments with us tonight, if you want to make them on the sheet tonight and then leave with us, you can give them to me, and I'll make sure they get to the proper place. We realize, and I understand, that any public project often creates emotions in people, and we understand that, appreciate that. I would, however, ask that we all be respectful, even if we disagree with each other, people can agree to disagree, but we do ask that you be respectful toward one another. At this time, I would like to call on Paul Shaffer with the engineering firm of Butler Fairman and Cypher. Paul is the vice president of that engineering firm and also the project manager for this project, and Paul will then provide you a brief overview of the draft environmental assessment.
Good evening. I'll give you a brief overview of the purpose and need of the project first. The current runway 1836 at the airport is 3,433 feet long by 40 feet wide and does not fully meet the FAA runway design requirements for the class of the critical aircraft currently using land or forecasted to operate at the airport. The current runway does not allow the current critical aircraft to operate efficiently. They must operate with reduced cargo loads, reduced fuel, or fly shorter distances before refueling. These deficiencies need to be addressed to meet FAA design standards for the current and forecasted users. To address these identified deficiencies, the airport needs to, one, build a 100-foot wide runway, have a runway safety area of at least 500 feet wide, have a runway object-free area of at least 800 feet wide, clear obstructions from each end of the runway, comply with all applicable FAA safety standards, and provide a runway of significant length to accommodate the operations of the critical aircraft. There are over 9,700 operations ranging from single-engine piston aircraft to small jets. These aircraft are operationally limited, as stated above. In addition, there are over 500 additional operations that require a longer runway. These operations are derived from support letters gathered over time and have been confirmed by the FAA in 2010 and revalidated in March and April of 2015. The following alternatives were considered for the project. Alternative one was no action, do nothing. Two was replace and realign the runway to 1836, from 1836 to runway 119. And three, improve and extend the existing runway on its existing alignment. Four, transfer the aviation activity to another airport or another mode of transportation. And five, find a new site, a site relocation for the airport. As we went forward, all of these were eliminated except for option one, which was the no-action alternative, as required by the environmental process, and option two, which was replace and realign the runway 1836 to runway 119. It would be 5,405 feet long by 100 feet wide and will be referred to in the document as the proposed action. This runway is proposed to be west and south of the existing runway to avoid physical obstructions to the party arriving aircraft and allow adequate space around the runway to meet the current FAA standards. The runway will be designed for aircraft of C-2 standards, which means up to 140 knots and a wingspan of 117 feet. These would be typical small and medium business jets, if you're familiar with those, not commercial, like a 737, 738, that's not what we're talking about. There were nineteen resources, categories evaluated for the no-action proposal, as prescribed by the environmental process. They're in the book, I'm not going to go into great detail on that. The public participation so far. On August 14th of 2012, we held a previous public hearing on the draft 2012 version of this document. The runway was then proposed runway 119 in the same geometric configuration. Those comments will remain part of the permanent record for the final EA. The FAA's approach to addressing those previous comments was to revise the EA entirely. The 2017 draft, which is the draft we're here to talk about tonight, is the result of that previous hearing and your previous comments. It's been highly edited from the 2012 draft EA. For this reason, the individual responses to the comments previously obtained have not been answered correctly, but rather, the commenters of the 2012 draft will find their responses and their comments in the new 2017 document. Moving forward, it is the intent of the FAA and the sponsor, Greensburg Board of Aviation Commissioners, to provide a response to the comments at this hearing, as well as any written comments that Don suggested, and incorporate them into the final EA document. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, I would like to call on Dr. John Dooley, the vice president of the Greensburg Board of Aviation Commissioners, to make some introductions and also to read a couple of letters. John?
As you all came in, there was some information on the back table right there. One of those was a, it has a 5% on the top. Explains funding for the project in a very simplistic way. You know, when we go fill up our gas tanks at the gas station, there's always fees and taxes associated with those that, that goes towards improving roads and bridges. We all know that. And, by the way, those are going up 10% here on weekends, so where's Randy Frye with the thing? On this week? Okay. And anyway, there's also fees attached to the aviation fuel, air freight, airline tickets have similar fees attached to those. Those go to fund the Airport and Airway Trust Fund, which was started in 1970 during the Nixon administration. Has currently just short of $15 billion in fund to start in 2017, and is projected to take in almost $15 billion more dollars this year. Nine are from this project, given its approval, 90% of the total cost of the project would come from that Airport and Airway Trust Fund. Another 5% comes from the state of Indiana. In Dotson Aviation Division has a similar project, and another 5% is the local share for the project. And that's a very simplistic way to explain it, but basically, if you remember one thing about funding, it's 5%. We'll go on to some introductions. Again, I am the vice president of the Board, president of the Aviation Board Billerstis of your age or may bill. Okay, we've got Don Whipple, board member, and Horace Reese. All members of the Greensburg Board of Aviation Commissioners were appointed by the mayor in four-year standard terms. And I think Jim Pruitt is on board too, but is not here tonight, could not be here tonight, so. We'll call up some names. I do have a few letters that were sent in that I need to read, but in, ahead of that, I'd like to introduce Randy Frye. He's from District 67, he's our Indiana State Representative of Indiana District 67. Mr. Frye, you come up, please.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, good evening. I have your comments I was going to make, but I've just edited them after the comment about the guest. It's 10 cents a gallon, not 10%. So anyway, you know, I'm sure there are many people here who have a lot of their comments, so I'll take much of your time. I was just thinking a lot this afternoon, spent a lot of time on a tractor today, and I was just thinking about this particular meeting. I was thinking about, as a boy, an eight-year-old boy, and my dad and I would talk about I-74 and the importance of I-74, and as a kid, I didn't understand it. Even as a teenager, when I'd drive on it, when I first started driving, I thought maybe it was a mistake. Sometimes you'd drive from Batesville to Greensburg, and you'd see no car. Well, where would Greensburg be today without, without forward-thinking folks back in my dad's era? Also thought about I-70. I don't have the facts, this is something I was told as a kid, but I understand that I-70 was supposed to go through Connersville, and that Connersville didn't want it, and they fought it, and they won the fight, and they moved it north. And when I was a young man, Connersville was a boomtown, a lot of businesses were in Connersville. If you go over there today, they've got one of the highest unemployments in our state. It's because it weren't forward-thinking. It weren't looking down the road 20, 30, 40 years from now and what might happen because we have these resources. So my comments are, I believe that we need to continue to look at this, I think it's something that we need as an economic tool, as a economic generator for the future, and I just hope that the city and the airport board and the property owners can come to and agree on whatever's best for all parties, without thanks.
Mayor Dan Manis unable to be with us here tonight. In his place, though, Mr. Glenn Tebby.
Good evening. I am Glenn Tebby. I am representing the mayor tonight. He has a sense of his regrets, he wishes he could be here, but health does comp that, and he has to stay home. He, like I think, I can speak for the rest of the city officials, support the airport expansion in this project completely, while I have not reviewed the entire environmental package. We believe that it supports the need and the reasons for it. Others tonight will undoubtedly talk about some of the other reasons that are obvious to what Frye just, what Dan Frye just mentioned in terms of the economic benefit to present companies as well as to future companies in the industry. There is a real need for a longer and updated airport, and some of the other reasons include the future community needs in terms of growth and progress that we expect. In addition to those, there's the need that was outlined, I think, by, in the environmental project, it's talked about differences and the change in modes of air transportation and the needs that they have that are going to continue and in parts that will not keep up. But the mayor asked me tonight to emphasize one particular aspect, because others are going to be talking about some of those obvious ones, and that is safety. Because the airport runway will be reoriented and moved, many who have raised the concern of safety because of the park and so on have it. Actually, by changing, adding this runway, expanding the runway, we are enhancing the safety that's here. It's been a very safe project, but if accidents can happen to you, this is one way to help minimize and mitigate that even further. So we believe that the project is needed, is something that this community has been waiting for for a long time, and we believe that it has not only the practical effect of economics and the other kinds of things, but a very practical effect of enhancing the safety of the community use with regard to the other things that are right here. Thank you.
Also like to introduce the president of our local Chamber of Commerce, Susan Dorflinger.
She's such a drag group. Susan Dorflinger, I've lived in here for twenty years. I don't think you care where I live, but again, I am representing the Chamber, our office is just down the hall. On October 2000, or in October 2016, the Chamber had a meeting of directors. The Chamber unanimously approved and endorsed the expansion and improvement plans of Greensburg Municipal Airport. The Greensburg to Gator County Chamber of Commerce believes increased access options to Greensburg and Decatur County and Lake County are attractive to businesses and industry, including potential new development. An expanded airport can mean millions of dollars in investments and more jobs, as well as other retail, commercial, and agricultural-related development. The Chamber also believes established businesses and manufacturers will benefit from an expanded runway in the event that production lines are shut down due to a broken part of machinery. Those parts could easily be transported directly to our county via air, avoiding a delay in transportation from an airport more than 25 miles away. The Chamber believes companies will also be available to benefit by flying in their corporate executives or suppliers directly to Greensburg for leads and other supplies. Plus, the Chamber is aware that without an expanded and improved airport, Greensburg and Decatur County could be immediately eliminated from any possible plans from a company looking to relocate or build new in our community. Because of the potential economic impact of the community of Greensburg and Decatur Counties, the Greensburg Decatur County Chamber of Commerce fully supports an immediate expansion and improvement of the Greensburg Municipal Airport. Thank you very much.
Been asked to read the letters that have been submitted by folks who could not be here. First, a letter from Luke Messer, is addressed to Mr. James Keever, the manager of the Chicago Airport's district office, and the letter reads as follows. Dear Mr. Keever, it is my pleasure to contact you in response to Greensburg Municipal Airport's FAA environmental impact study. The Greensburg Airport, along with the city of Greensburg and Decatur County, are part of the sixth congressional district which I represent. The Greensburg Municipal Airport has the potential to be a valuable asset for Greensburg and the surrounding communities. With few public use airports near the city, it serves as both an engine for regional economic growth and is an important base for emergency responders. Numerous upgrades, including extension and widening of the runway, are planned as well. Given the positive impact this could have for Greensburg and the region, I would respectfully request that the FAA look favoritively upon the Greensburg Municipal Airport without restrictions and at the greatest utility possible. May reject or answer questions to John Moten at 2 Public Square, Sheldonville, Indiana, 46176, or via email at john.moten@email.house.gov. Thank you for the kind consideration of this most important matter. Sincerely, Luke Messer, a member of Congress, Sixth District of Indiana. Another letter that also asked to been read to be read into record here. It's from State Senator Chip Perfect, and this one's addressed to Greensburg Board of Aviation Commissioners. Says, Dear Commissioners, as Indiana State Senator for District 43, I'd like to express support for the proposed expansion of the Greensburg Municipal Airport. This project is important to the Greensburg community, and the expansion will serve as an economic development tool and spur the creation of more jobs. While the benefit from the expansion of the Greensburg Municipal Airport will be valuable, the economic development must be done in a mindful way that serves the entire community and not just economic interest. The benefits of the expansion need to be defined and shaped by community involvement and input from the Greensburg residents. This partnership will be a crucial element in the success of the project. If I may need further assistance, please do not hesitate to contact my office, 317-232-9489. I wish the best of success to the city of Greensburg and their efforts to expand the Greensburg Municipal Airport. Warm regards, Chip Perfect, Indiana State Senator. And the final letter, we will read here, just addressed to who may concern, it's from a former Greensburg mayor, Gary Bailey. He was the mayor from 2000, 2003. Says, On November 2nd, 1999, I was elected mayor of the city of Greensburg, Indiana. Within a few months of taking office, we began exploring the possibilities of the expansion slash update of our airport. We hired a engineering firm to help us navigate all the necessary steps to make sure we positioned ourselves for success. This firm has been working for the city nonstop since. We have followed every piece of advice and completed every step. Several times, several steps have been taken over time, including this public meeting for the second time. Now, in the year 2017, nearly two decades later, we have seen very little forward movement on our initial plans. I was told it would take some time, but had you told me in 1999 that in 2017, we would still basically be at the starting line, I would have laughed at you. It's time to move forward. Several local industries have expressed a need for an expanded airport. The city of Greensburg, Decatur County, and the region as a whole will benefit. This is not a difficult project. When broken down to its basic forms, it's really nothing more than a slab of concrete in a field. The entire hollow space program was accomplished unless done. It is time to move forward. The city has done everything needed to make this happen. It's time for the FAA to give a standard approval and release the funds to the building of this much-needed piece of infrastructure. Thank you for your consideration. Gary Bailey, Mayor of Greensburg, 2000, 2003.
Thank you, Dr. Dooley. At this point, we're ready to begin the public comment period, and remember, we did indicate three minutes. We have a timer here that records you when 30 seconds are left, and then also records you when the time's up. And also, remember that your comments are more than often denied. If you don't feel comfortable getting out in public, then you can, again, fill out the form and get it in, either tonight or later than July 10. Our first speaker on our speakers' list this evening is Mark Copeland or Copeland?
Copeland.
Okay, that's our first speaker.
Yes.
Okay.
Good folks, I would like to, well, first, let me tell you, my name is Mark Copeland. I live in 2018 North 85, Department B, it's in Greensburg, Indiana, and I am the executive director of the Greensburg Decatur County Economic Development Corporation. There are three letters that I would like to read. They were addressed to our mayor, Mayor Manis, and that will probably take up my three minutes, so I'd like to come back after that and read a letter from our Economic Development Corporation. First letter is from Honda, that's H-MAN of Indiana. Reads, Mayor Dan Manis, Honda Manufacturing of Indiana LLC has been asked to share our point of view and support for an expansion of the Greensburg Airport. H-MAN's general use of airport facilities as part of the supply chain consists primarily of the delivery of parts when needed. The following have been constraints to H-MAN's usage of the Greensburg Airport. Runway length, must utilize small props or turboprops with light loads. No localized weather reporting, must be cleared and drive land. No forklift access, limits the weight per piece or skid to about 150 pounds. Addressing these constraints could benefit the local economy. We support the city's overall efforts to assist local businesses. Regards, Fred Main, Chief Administrator and Business Regards, Fred Main, Chief Administrator and Business Division Manager. Second letter, it's from MainSource Banking Insurance Investment Corporation. Dear Mayor Manis, on behalf of MainSource Financial Group Incorporated, I am writing in support of an expansion of the Greensburg Municipal Airport. The future of our community is bright. Greensburg is strategically located between two major metropolitan areas along High Seventy-Four. In recent years, we have experienced significant growth in employment. The current airport runway does not meet existing needs with respect to efficiency. A significant increase in operations could occur with a runway of sufficient length. In order to attract and better serve major employers in the areas and enhance economic activity for our community, it is important that our local airport be expanded as proposed by the Greensburg Board of Aviation Commissioners. If you have any questions, please contact me. Very truly yours, Archie M. Brown, Jr., MainSource Financial Group President and CEO.
That's three minutes.
That's three? Yes.
I'm just going to mark you, I'll call you back in.
Thank you.
Our next scheduled speaker is Jim McIntyre.
My name's Jim McIntyre. I live at eighteen ten North Harbor. Coming in this game a little late, apparently. We've been doing this since nineteen ninety-nine. In regards to the could-be and would-haves and everything, I don't see where we're going with this. Honda Manufacturing had a chance to be on the east side of the county where they were closer to an airport that would meet their needs, and they chose to be where they're at. MainSource Bank, who's going to finance this? So I'm seeing a lot of political and financial gain for people that are not citizens, well, are citizens, but have a wallet that's involved in this. Somewhere along the line, this airport board has forgotten where this community started a long time ago, and that says, a farming community. Everybody's wanting to become this big manufacturing community and bring in all these jobs, but you're forgetting that people have a right to their private land ownership, and you're talking about taking a man's farm away from him for an airport runway, that nobody seems to see a direct impact right now of being needed. You talk about environmental surveys. Where's all this water going to go when you put this place under concrete? Anybody that owns property down Lady Ford and down Sand Creek with the recent construction around Greensburg, that's seen are ready and increase in the runoff of these places that are under concrete and more asphalt. Too many farmers have already got cropped underwater now in those lowland areas south of this town, and you're talking about putting more water into this creek that's already stressed to hold what's there at the current level now. And everybody's forgetting about what's going on downstream. Talking about changing the angle, putting these aircraft over top of homes that are built along these roadways and everything alongside this airport at an angle that puts it out of where our kids play ball, where this community decided to build a sports complex that brings in kids and a lot of tourism and a lot of dollars to this town. Now you're going to put those kids in danger with aircraft going over top of their heads and out. And the expanded picture of this map, you're also putting those aircraft over top of the city proper, coming in low. And if that's such an angle, you're going to be going right across, right across from the supermarket and residential areas. Those planes are going to be coming in, landing, and taking off over top of other homes that don't think see, people seeing the big picture of that angle on an expanded map. We've already had enough aircraft accidents around here in recent years. I'd like to call back.
Next speaker on the speakers list is Donna Stevens. Next, Pam Robbins.
Thank you for letting me come and visit with you and learn more. My name is Jen Robbins. I live at sixteen eighty-six South County Road to East West. And I am directly, whichever the way the air goes, either in the beginning or the end of the runway, if I understand it. So the runway will currently be in my direction. So that's affects us pretty good. And I'm heartbroken. First, we're going to take our house and lake, and you moved slightly, so you're taking more of that long rail than someone else to protect our home, and that purpose is two. But what I'd like to talk about is the five percent. I thought this was interesting. Five percent of what? Is it thirty-two thousand, thirty-two million? Is that what it is? Is that the first phase or three phases I understand? And the first phase is that thirty-two million? So as a city, who's paying that? The city taxpayers? But thirty-two million is a million, six hundred dollars. And that's the first phase. So let's say second phase, the third phase. Maybe fifty-two million? I don't know the total. So they say that dollars and cents is two million, six hundred dollars. So that will be to the city taxpayers, the way I understand it, what have to pay this? So just thought, five percent is very nice, but when you put out dollars and cents, it's a lot of money. Also, I'm not quite sure, I've studied this in my mind as a person, why we need this? And I've come to the conclusion that there are a handful of enthusiast, airplane enthusiasts that would like a new runway. Well, that's affecting directly fifty landowners. So these airplane enthusiasts will have their fun at the expense of fifty direct landowners. So I don't know where, that's a big number. It's a big number to be affecting. Of course, our property won't be worth anything because of the airport's there. So it's a very, very low value once the airport is finished. So that's what I have to say, and I'm praying, I'm praying God will guide each one of you to do the right thing for Greensburg or less landowners. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Laura Collins.
Most of you on the board know who I am. Butler Bearman Seifert will soon know who I am. But at the twenty-twelve meeting, Butler Bearman Seifert, the FAA, and the Airport Board promised the landowners that they will be kept in the loop of everything going on. Twenty-seventeen, no loop. Notification of this meeting, no loop. And when you come down to the questions and answers, the questions and answers were supposed to be sent to the people who got up at that meeting and spoke, not five years later, but shortly after the meeting. That was promised to us. Now, I don't know who dropped the ball, or whether you just thought the landowners were not interested, but we are. There's a lot of foreign land that's going to be interrupted on account of some aircraft. Aircraft that has not yet met the need, according to the citizens of Greensburg. So I would like to put to you folks why this hasn't been done, and why the questions weren't answered on time, why the landowners haven't given notification, even though it's in the paper, how many others take the paper? So you dropped the ball there very, very badly. So my trust has dropped dramatically on all of us. But there are a few of us, I agree, that were not here on the board at that time. But still, the new board members should have been made aware of the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Robbins. Next would be Gene Joganjia.
Good evening. What I would like to address for this public hearing is the need, or should I say the lack of need, of expanding this airport in the manner it is being proposed? The buzzword, but according to elected officials and many who are not informed of this subject, that validates in their mind the ability to seek this grant and spend this amount of money and to eminent domain and prime farm ground is economic development. What, where are the factual statistics to back up this claim? Why has there been no return on investment to address whether there is a need for this expansion? What will the cost increases be to maintain an airport that goes from thirty-two acres to over two hundred acres? What will the cost of the Federal Aviation Administration compliance is that Greensburg Airport will be mandated to abide by? Where are the facts to support any of these claims? BRAC Rails actually compiled statistics from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Census Bureau and presented those findings to the Airport Board in one of their meetings. What did the statistics show that BRAC Rails complied? I quote, "It basically showed that these forty-five areas didn't show a marked improvement in employment or income in eight years after they built or expanded an airport." I have also included a link to BRAC's compilation of statistics in this writing. What does another professional in the economic field say about expanded airports? Three-quarters of general aviation airports lose money every year and stay solvent only with cash from local taxpayers, says Vitaly Kusov, a finance professor at Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Florida. And I supplied the link here. The Transportation Research Board, known as the TRB, is a division of the National Research Council of the United States, which serves as an independent advisor to the President of the United States of America, the Congress, and federal agencies on scientific and technical questions of national importance. The TRB says the following. Major conclusions reached. Our traditional needs analysis and benefit cost techniques are too subjective to be used to justify airport construction. Return on investment analysis offers the best procedure for objectively evaluating the merits of a project. Number two, alternative project scopes should be tested using return on investment analysis to define the most appropriate project scope. I have the link here to that information. This too from the TRB. Research has shown that only the larger, major airports are financially self-supporting. General aviation airports seldom bring in enough revenue to meet their costs, although some small airports ostensibly can cover their costs. In most cases, this claim is the product of using accounting practices which disguise scos, cost, and do not reflect true financial operation. General aviation airports should look to all potential revenue sources, concessions, sales factions, personal property taxes, and government subsidies. Historically, government subsidies have been restricted to capital improvements. These grants usually have strings attached which require the facilities to be maintained. Okay, I would like to back.
I'll mark you down and bring you back up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next is Mark Casey.
I try to keep mine simple. Basically, we're given three minutes to talk about plans. It's going to be taken away from us forever. But I've talked to all the landowners. There've been rumors around and some of them spread by members of this Airport Board that that there, some of the landowners are willing to give up their land, and not one Airport Board member, or not one landowner is, has, I've talked to every one of them, not one of them wishes to give up their land. So that's all been speculation and rumors, and this thing has hit us so hard. We've been fighting this since two thousand and three and trying to bring some sense into it. And everybody I've talked to on the street says, what do we need an airport for? And here's all this nonsense about economic development and stuff, and it is nonsense because everyone's told the same thing. Go to Orange County, they've got three airports, and they've got some of the worst unemployment in the state. Airport has nothing to do with it. That's for hobby pilots and a handful of, the commercial ones go to the big airports, they don't go to these. They go where there's aircraft control, where there's fire safety. They're not going to mess with this. And I think this is complete nonsense, and like Pam said, there's over fifty homes directly involved in the path of this thing. And it's, it needs to be stopped, and it needs to be put somewhere, if you don't have it, if they ever do feel they have to have an airport, it needs to be put somewhere where it makes sense, not here among all these homes, among the ballpark and the fairgrounds and all that stuff. It's, they're just, there's no need to, it's, the way the landowners have been treated through this, I didn't know about it until I found them surveying my deal. And I've followed it ever since, and it's just, I've gone round and round with everybody, and nobody will talk sense. They all act like it's a done deal, and they're going to do it whether you like it or not. And I don't, that don't work that way. So I, Mark McGee said, injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And that's a true statement, but this is injustice. This is, the way this has been handled from day one has been complete nonsense. And, and timeout?
Thirty seconds.
Oh, okay, all right. I think that's, I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Casey. Next, I think, I'm reading it right, it's Gary Herbert. You should be a doc, Gary. Pardon, you should be a doctor.
My name is Gary Herbert, sixteen twenty-five North Harbor, Greensburg, Indiana. Gentlemen, good evening, and thank this generous opportunity. For the reasons that I'm about to read, I continue to support your efforts. I believe that expansion is an important part of our future economic infrastructure for Greensburg and Gator County residents, much like the interstate was in nineteen sixty-three. Such as was saying the keeping of our railroad in place by the efforts of a small group of residents that had the foresight to lobby to keep it intact. Thousands of cars are shipped by rail each year from Honda Manufacturing of Indiana, as well as other businesses that utilize the railroad. Interstate is one of the utmost importance to the logistics to encourage business development in Gator County. Airport expansion will give us an economic edge for cities without an airport that can save and serve this community, both for business and travel and freight purposes. It has been stated in the past by some that this airport is not needed for business to locate here. That statement is true to the extent that that is why Columbus and Shelbyville, our neighbors, are doing so well attracting new businesses and expansions. It is my opinion that this, that the expansion will most likely produce more jobs within our community and consequently more housing required, which in turn means more property tax revenue, that will stabilize our tax base, which will lessen the tax burden by each of us paying property taxes. Whether the people here tonight are supporting the expansion project or opposing the project, I think that we are all speaking from our hearts and that we are all sincere in our opinions. Some say we don't want or need an expanded airport, but I would like to say, on a project, project so important to this community, that I would rather you try and fail than try and fail. so important to this community, that I would rather you try and fail than not try at all. In closing, I would like to thank you, the Airport Board, the Community Ministers, for giving the citizens of Greensburg and this opportunity, once again, voice their opinions and concerns regarding the expansion project. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next, Susan Burkhart.
I'm Susan Burkhart. Same person.
Oh.
Maybe I need a schedule. There's only one meeting.
Seems like two, but they're moving on.
Next one is Phil Goddard.
And I'm in hopes that her agreement will allow me to finish with Mr. Goddard's statement. The Goddard family and I am here speaking for Phil Goddard, Stephen Goddard, and Barbara Goddard. And they... Phil is having a serious surgery in the morning, and they are checking him into a motel because he's got to be there at 5:30 this tomorrow morning, stress free. The Goddard family, LLC, is once again voicing its objection for the expansion of the Greensburg Airport as it affects our property. Twelve years ago, my mother, brother, and I began attending meetings of the City Council and the BOEC, listening to the efforts to justify this endeavor at its current location. There were statements regarding public interest, public use, economic development, cheap money, and immediate need. None of this existed with substantiated facts then, and is certainly not true today. The only thing that has changed is additional angst to landowners, and certainly for the community, and a considerable expanse to landowners and citizens of the community who have objected to this project. My family has spent considerable monies trying to protect our farmland. Citizens have spent considerable money by retaining Steve Tabor, a former FAA attorney who contends this expansion is totally contrary to law, and who has set forth his arguments in previous submissions to the FAA. The expenses will be even greater if this is contested in the Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals in Chicago. One thing we have learned is that there is a clear...